Welcome, everybody, to a board meeting tonight. I'm going to call the meeting to order and start with the pledge of allegiance. Do you stand with me?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Entertainer motion.
Mr. President, I move that the board approved the September 11th, 2023 agenda.
Motion made and seconded. Motion passes. Next, we'll have a report of the board members.
Good evening, everyone. I had the opportunity to, uh-oh, I'm on the wrong page. You go first. On the wrong.
So I had the opportunity to attend some of our football games. Just kind of because I'm over curriculum instruction and that's a big love for me. And doing Harvard's professional education series on building an inclusive and equitable school environment. And just kind of as a way to learn about engaging the community more. I attended a caring for kids network as a way to mobilize community organizations, partner with schools. Have done some informal check-ins with veteran and some of the new teachers. And I am hoping to work with Mr. Newton on some opportunities for that community engagement to help enhance our students' educational experiences. My heart was in the right place. I tried to attend the town hall, but I got there when it was over. Right when it was over. And then I'll do some updates later on about the curriculum and instruction and professional learning committee.
Good evening. I lost my notes, but I'm going to say it from my heart. I was able to attend the town hall meeting and it was very informative. I was able to attend the new teachers welcome and welcome to any new teachers that are here tonight. I was able to attend the convocation. It was wonderful. The district convocation for our teachers and for the district. And one more. Oh, educational learning session. I was able to attend that and I really enjoyed that. That's it.
Hope everyone is doing well this evening. I had the fortune of attending the A16 networking diet. A16 day. I had a blast with the chamber and I seen Mr. Terry Gibson out there. So we had fun in the sun. It was hot. So, but it was nice. I had the opportunity to attend Wright Town South and Wright Town South Middle School to meet the teachers before the school year started. So that was pretty, really, really nice. I had the opportunity to go with Dr. Martin Knox to North Fleet and Wright Town South High School and visit and talk to students and even had the opportunity to dance with kindergarteners. It was tremendously exhausting, but it was something that was fun. I had the opportunity to go up to Wright South and meet the teachers, speak to some teachers, have fun, talk to some of them as well. I went to the instructional leadership class with Dr. Griner and his crew. I learned a new channel of dance. It was really, really nice. So we had fun. Actually, and I went to the town hall meeting that Dr. Martin Knox had. It was really inspirational and good. And then I closed out the week by going to Wright Town South and Grandview's football game. And I had a really good time at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, that will conclude our board member reports. We have student representatives here.
Just checking. Good evening. It's my first time here, so I'm excited that you guys are having me. Just get right into it. If you have any questions on what I have to say, just shout them out. Let me know. So first thing that we did as a student council, oh, I guess, let me introduce myself. I'm Riley Bertrand. I am your student council president for South High. First thing our student council did was, of course, our Stuca Retreat. This is the first one we've had since pre-COVID, I believe. And so I think that was very fundamental in building what we want as a council. We got new sponsors this year and so it was very, it was very exciting to be able to exciting to be able to, you know, shape the council how we all want it as, as student council members. After that was our freshman orientation. We got our new freshmen around the building. We let them know who people are, who we are, which I think is the most important thing. I'm, I'm big on student to student communication, especially with people like in student council who is able to, you know, facilitate that change and critique in the school. After that was our grade level assemblies. This is something new that we did this year. Executive Board planned the entirety of those where we went through each grade level saying, hey, welcome or welcome back. And, you know, here's what you need to look forward to this year. Heavy emphasis on, you know, what you need to tell freshmen and I think heavy emphasis on what you needed to tell juniors because in my opinion and many other's opinion, junior year is the most important year of high school with, you know, getting on that track on where you need to go. Alongside that, we did a few teacher appreciation letters, kind of welcome to our building or you know, thanks for coming back. We really wanted to recognize the, the teacher retention that we had in the building. So it was nice to be able to voice that, you know, graciousness for coming back. And then we get into September. So we have had all our football game themes planned out. I think from probably the first week of school. Last Friday, we was our tacky tourist day, which in my opinion was probably the best like showing of spirit that I've seen in a while at our, at our football games. So that was really exciting and it's very promising for what's coming up next. Neon night against, at the Battle of the Birds. With the Battle of Birds, we have to plan an assembly pep rally and that's this Friday. So we're very excited. It'll be our first full school-wide pep rally. And so we get to show our newer representatives, you know, all that goes into planning like minute by minute of like, here, what's, hey, this is what's going on. How to get people's attention? How do we, you know, hype them up for the Battle of the Birds? Like I said, Neon Night is the theme and you guys are all invited and we prefer that you come in, you know, bright colors, neon. We'll get you some glow sticks, hopefully. And then again with September, we have a homecoming pep rally on the 30th. Or excuse me, the 29th, because that's our homecoming game. So that's counting the final grade level assembly that we did. That's three assemblies all in one month, which is intense, I think, for, for a council to do, but I think it was certainly doable. As long as you have that drive and, and ability to, you know, see within, you know, not get it, not let it intimidate you with, with all the planning that goes into that, you know, one step at a time. Homecoming, it in my mind, it seems distant, even though it's what, three weeks away? Because we have that Battle of the Birds Assembly Pep Rally coming up and so I don't have much on that. We have, we had our first spirit week this, starting this week. We went at a easy spirit week, so we just did school colors. We'll, we're do, we actually are doing a competition on which grade level, you know, shows out the most. And so I'm excited for that. And then it'll be, I think we'll select a winner at this Friday's pep rally. And then we've already planned another spirit week. So three assemblies, two spirit weeks this month for homecoming. And I'm super excited for what the student body, you know, shows up with and, and the reaction to the days we've chosen. I think that's all. Do you guys have questions for me? Yeah. I had a discussion with my sponsor that like leadership of the district can say, thank you, thank you, thank you as much as they want, but also it coming from the student, students is also, you know, so important for the teachers. And so I'm glad that we able, were able to, to push something out to them.
So I think you did an incredible job. This is your first time and you're, you're like a pro.
Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, so I was, I'm just a little bit more distant on ordering the, the things that come in such as our glow sticks and stuff like that, but are you, are you more familiar with that or is that other exec board members? You want to do that? Okay.
Hello, my name is Charis Shelley. I'm the vice president for Wright Town South. One of our senior representatives came up the idea for a neon assembly off of some inspiration pictures she has seen online. And just like having black lights, having glow sticks, like wavy little like, what? Like styrofoam light up sticks? I don't know what you would call those. But just creating that like live environment ahead of like a big rivalry game for us, I think can be very bad official for everybody, the school spirit, the school environment, everything like that. But we did not come up with the idea. Want to give representation to Jalila. We love Jalila. But yeah, you guys are all welcome. We will, we will have them, even if we haven't ordered them yet. We will have the glow sticks. Thank you.
So I also appreciate like Dr. Douglas said that you guys were paying attention to the teachers. I think it's probably the first time I've ever heard a high school student use the phrase teacher retention. I don't think I ever used that until I was over 40 years old. So teacher retention is important. So impressive that you guys are even thinking about something like that.
I think that's been a huge theme over the past probably two years was teacher retention and how important that is for the district as a whole.
So we're glad you're here tonight and hopefully you'll be here every, every month.
Yeah.
Last year, South reps weren't here quite as often as Wright Town. Hopefully you guys will be here. Appreciate you trying to get the student body together and moving in the same direction and that camaraderie and all that stuff. Good.
Thank you. I'm fine with bias towards Wright South. Thank you.
I just want to say as well, appreciate the work you're doing. Got a lot planned this month.
Yes.
Man, when you start out so fast, man, you got it. What you gonna do next month?
Right. No, right. Right.
But keep up the good work. Keep up the good work and, you know, you know, encourage one another and, and stay with it, you know? It ain't, sometimes, you know, it's not fun till it's over.
No, exactly. Yep.
Yeah. And so you, you're glad you did it and I know that it benefited you greatly and benefit us, the whole community greatly. So really appreciate that.
Thank you. Yeah, I'd say September and, and April are always the busiest month for student council or I guess May, May for prom. September, because it's back to school. It's your first full month and then May for prom and, and, you know, wrapping up that, that school year.
And may I just add, Mr. President, thank you, Riley, and thank you, Charis. And Mr. Newton, you do remember, I just want to make sure that everyone knows that the planning that goes behind these events, it's more than just young adults sitting in a classroom and saying, this is what we want to do because it's going to be fun. These individuals actually planned out events, built a budget, built a procedure, program plans, all that it entails in order for it to be successful. So I just wanted to publicly commend you, your class and your teacher. It was your leadership class that I had come in, right?
Yes.
Just for the work that you're doing because it is what we call real world learning experiences. And so it really helps you, especially in that business aspect, but also in leadership. So thank you for your representation and for the work that occurs at Wright South High School.
Thank you. Thank you. We're going back to bat.
Good evening, President Burton, Board of Education, Dr. Martin Knox. This evening, we are recognizing the Wright Town South High School Band and their director, Marissa Romero, for representing us in an outstanding way on KMBC 9's Banding Together for Teachers. They had less than two weeks to learn the music and get it together and perform it live. And they did all this while we were having a heat wave. So kudos to them. They did a great job and we have a video that showcases some of their finished work.
Hi, I'm Marissa Romero and I'm the band director at Wright Town South High School. In preparation for the Banding Together for Teachers TV series, the Wright Town South High School Band was a ray of hope for their community by showing dedication and hard work and being a positive example for our community members and representing our school in a positive light. Wright Town South High School Band students have been a ray of hope to me because I've had the pleasure of being their middle school band director for the last six years. This is my first year as high school head director. A lot of the kids I've known for six years now, the seniors were my first group of sixth graders. It's been remarkable to see how they've grown as musicians and as people. And it's just a great reminder of the positive impact that teachers get to have on students every single day. The students' dedication and determination in practice really showed in the live show. Because what you didn't see was that by the time the students were on air, they'd been playing for about eight minutes straight. They'd been standing still for over an hour and they worked really hard to push through that. The thing I'm looking forward to most for this school year with the Wright Town South High School Band is getting our competitive season underway, making new memories with this specific group of kids and seeing our band family come together and just have a lot of fun.
My name is Louise Esquina. I'm a senior here at Wright Town South High School. In preparation for our Ray of Hope feature in the news, we did a lot of work in the back. Our drum line often just randomly played it because it's more fun to learn that way. And even as a band, it was fun to try and figure out a new set of music so quickly, especially when we're used to memorizing longer pieces of music. So it was definitely an interesting experience to say the least. This school year, I look forward to getting along with our new drum line and being the best section there I can be. Since, or with it being my senior year, I'm looking forward to giving as much back to the band as it's given to me and trying to continue the legacy that we've created over these last four years.
My name is Brian Ferguson. I'm a junior at Wright Town South High School and preparing for this KMBC new series, it was a lot of at-home work and helping out the new ones in like our in-school rehearsals. But it was a lot of determination and effort going into this as well. And we were being a ray of hope by just showing up and being proud of ourselves. And I think that that was something we can do very well, being proud and being strifled and showing them who we are. I look forward the most to just having fun and having amazing experiences with everybody that I've already known and people I'm getting to know now. I feel like everyone here is set for this band and I know that everyone here can do amazing things, even now, later on in life, eventually they can do amazing things. And also I just want to perform, like performing in general is making me feel great. Like seeing a crowd, yeah.
And joining us this evening is the band director, Marissa Romero, and a few of the band members. If you all will come forward, please.
Before you all leave, can I ask you to do me a favor? Going to use some language that you're going to understand that your principal is not. But I just need you to help him with his marching. Get him a pair of drumsticks and teach him a couple paradiddles or something so that he makes himself more useful. Okay? But, but in all fairness, you all are amazing. And so I just appreciate you and your representation. Kudos to you all.
He tried his best. He did his best. Yeah, that was good. All right, we, next was the public comment period, period. On agenda items, we don't have anybody signed up to make public comments tonight, so we'll move on past. Next, we'll have a board committee reports. I'll just call the committees one by one. Tell me if you have. Finance Committee?
We don't have any report other than the minutes that are attached.
Okay. Policy Review Committee?
I apologize. I still haven't gotten used to the mic situation. The following policies was reviewed and sent to September 11th, 2023 board meeting for first read. GBCA staff conflict of interest. The following policies were reviewed and sent to the September 11th, 2023 board meeting for adoption. BDDF, BDDL, DB, DBB, DJF, DJ, DJFA and GBLB, IGCE and JFGA. The meeting was adjourned and our next meeting is next month, the 8th.
Capital Improvement Committee will be scheduling a date to meet next week in regards to our bond projects and the, any capital, other capital improvement projects that we have. So we'll schedule that meeting and have a report at that time. Community Engagement Committee will also start meeting next month. You had any comment on that?
We have a couple of things going on that we can wait to mention until next month, if you like.
Whatever you desire.
So we are, we missed the starting of middle school tutoring committee or tutoring.
So we'll be starting a middle school tutoring, 6th, 7th and 8th grade to help out with some of the things that need to be to make the transition to high school for the middle school students. We'll be finding a facility to do that for the future. We also doing some, we're gonna start those community forums for the teacher, students, parents, just the community overall. So I want to get their input to see what you guys want to strengthen and help the community get stronger. A lot of the things that's going on. Also, I will be joining Terrence Frazier at the Real World Learning Community Roundtable. I'll be there Wednesday night from 6:00 to 7:00 at the Wellness Center. That's a community engagement thing with the, the whole community. So I'll be there. And that, we're also doing something with GHA, Joe Delaney for the swim to help our kids become, learn how to swim more safely. So we'll be having that meeting as well this week. And I'm also doing something with Dave Turner, Parks and Rec, to try to bring back this youth sports and a lot of different collaborative ideas with that. So I want to thank Ms. Salisbury for really like holding me. I got super accountable because I do sometimes go that direction when I need to go that direction. So she, so I want to say thank you and those are some of the things that we have on.
Thank you. Curriculum Professional Development Committee?
So yes, we had our meeting today and so of course we discussed
So yes, we had our meeting today and so of course we discussed student achievement. To what degree our students are learning and just evidence of the learning and how to support students and staff in a timely and responsive manner to raise the achievement. So one of those avenues that we have is our strategic plan and dashboard, which is aligned with the board goals. And currently every school as of I think by September 1st, they have developed a school progress plan. Which will encompass specific goals, which include the implementation of trauma smart attendance goals. And then of course reduce some behaviors that have like the highest number of infractions. And of course, we have had discussions about suspensions and those types of things. And then of course, looking at celebrations, you know, what do those look like? So to support this plan, collaborative teacher teams have been coming together and they're setting their unit goals in ELA and math at the elementary level and then high school. For all the courses that they are collaborating on. So the progress, the monitoring of that, what it looks like is the instructional leadership teams meeting monthly. To check on the progress of the teams, to do the walkthroughs of course with classrooms. And then they'll be providing feedback through scorecards for the purpose of creating this cadence of accountability. So there'll also be tracking of the percentage of the teams that are meeting these goals. And part of that is also providing support to students if they don't get the tier one instruction that everybody has in the whole classroom. So what that looks like is time being embedded within the instructional day. For the secondary students to get help with tier one supports with ELA and math, and that looks like small group instruction. Other updates include summer professional learning and curriculum writing. There were over a hundred teachers that participated in the curriculum and envision work and revision work. And then there've been some significant changes with the high school math and some new curricular resources. And then of course, discussion of assessment. And then of course, helping prepare our new teachers with extensive curriculum resources. So that's part of the whole retaining staff because they need that support. And this work is ongoing in the department meetings. And then last, there was the RQS PLC Institute with Solution Tree, where about eighty teachers they attended. And that was three days of PD. And then also some of our principals and curriculum coordinators were able to attend a portion of that. Did I leave anything out? Okay, all right, and that concludes some of our meeting. And I, we have another meeting in in January. Okay, so that's my report.
Thank you. Safety Committee or Citizens Advisory Committee, I think that would be Mr. Watson and we'll wait till next month when else.
Mr. President. I move the board approve June 12, 2023 Finance Committee meeting minutes and August 14, 2023 Board Policy Review Committee meeting minutes as presented.
Motion made and seconded. Just a sec. Take a vote. Motion passes. No finished business. We have the policy sent to first read as a result of change in state law. First read was August 14, 2023, zero motion.
Mr. President. I move board approve policies IF curriculum development, IIGAD, occupational education, JHC, student health services requirements, GHDF, suicide awareness and prevention, and JHG reporting and investigating child abuse and the like.
Motion made and seconded. Motion passes. Next we have the Education Advisory Board contract. Motion made and seconded. Dr. Greiner.
Good evening, President Burton, board members, Dr. Martin Knox. It is my pleasure tonight to bring a recommendation for a new partnership with Raytown Quality Schools with EAB. As you know, we have over thirty strategic planning projects happening simultaneously around the district. And a lot of that work involves researching best practices and pulling together resources. And we believe that EAB can be a partner that can truly help us exceed expectations with our strategic plan. We had the opportunity to visit with EAB on several occasions. Several of the executive leadership members are familiar with EAB and work with other districts. But they are a national, nationally recognized partner with many K-12 districts. And we believe again that their support and this partnership will help us achieve all of the goals of our strategic plan.
Any questions? Dr. Greiner.
So I think we are working with Mr. Gibson on the exact funding source. But this vendor not only supports curriculum and instruction, but will also support all aspects of the organization, finance, HR, communications. So we'll be working through probably multiple departments supporting the cost of the partnership. Because it will impact all aspects of the organization.
Take a vote. Motion passes. Thank you. New business, we have acoustic grand piano. Their motion? Motion made and seconded. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. President, board members. This although I think from Alex Consta, we find our towards five arts quarters. In assessing all of our piano positions, we've gone through the process of identifying which ones need to be replaced. The piano, the grand piano.
Sorry. First time. The grand piano at Raytown High is in the worst condition. With three different assessments, it landed at C rating for one and lower for all of the other ones. In fact, when it is tuned, it becomes out of tune within a week. And so at this point, it is time to be replaced. And so in this process, we've chosen to go with the pianos that need to be replaced first and we're going to do it in that order as need arises. So that's just why we started with Raytown High's grand piano to get that fixed because it's in the worst shape.
How long do these pianos last?
Well, this one was, this one is, was purchased in nineteen eighty-four. So it's, it's over forty, about forty years old. And so it's, it's time to be replaced. Nineteen eighty-four.
That's not comforting.
But this particular piano could last a lifetime if we take proper care of it because it's a good boss, it's a good, and it's brought to us by Steinway. So it's a good, it's a good instrument and I trust Doc and Mr. Oster that provide us to.
Absolutely.
Yeah, taking care of these instruments is a big undertaking, but they will last a lifetime.
A lifetime?
A Steinway or Steinway product, yes.
So how much is it worth with, without the discounts and trading? Curious.
That's information that I don't have.
Just curious.
Okay.
Well, it's probably around forty thousand, but we're probably getting a deal on that too. So probably if you went into the, the show showroom, probably fifty thousand dollars. An actual Steinway of that size would be at least a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
So we're definitely coming way in under budget.
Let's vote. How many do we have?
I don't have that information, but I will have it next time. I believe it's four.
All right, the Secretary Mentor Mentee Program. Motion made and seconded. Dr. Calcare.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board, Dr. Martin Knox. We have roughly sixty-five building and department secretaries across the district. Last year we turned over around twenty of those, over twenty-five percent of our secretarial staff. One of the things that we saw on exit surveys was those folks saying they needed more support. And if you think about all the things secretaries do in buildings, whether that's registrar, whether that's principal, secretary, finance payroll, if that's leave and attendance and FML. There is a lot of intricate things that those are administrative assistants and secretary staff do. And so really what they were saying is we need more specific and intentional training. One of the things we needed to do as well was connect our new folks with a point of contact, a mentor, a mentor. We recognize that bringing somebody that's outside of education new into this work will be a burden of work for somebody. That shouldn't be for free. We recognize if we connect somebody with a mentee, that is, that is time and commitment. In our, we, we do the same thing with our teachers and our mentor mentee program, the stipend is a little more. But it was certainly something we are trying to emulate with our administrative assistants.
That's cute. Go ahead.
All right, so how do these losses compare to prior years and they know important value to you or so? So what was it like in prior year?
So this was, you know, again, first year in HR, so I didn't poll how many of those secretaries we had in the past. I will say anecdotally, this is, this is a group of folks that were, you know, that we needed to start to explore ways that we could support them to help retain them. You know, anecdotally, it felt higher. Now, some of that I think is reflective of the larger labor market that we're competing with. You know, it's a harder proposition to bring people in at our starting wages, you know, compared to what they could find in the market. So I think there's a number of, I think we had some work to do with regard to onboarding and training and continual support, which we're addressing. But there's some other larger labor market issues that we're continuing with as well.
Mr. President, I just wanted to make a comment. I just think it's wonderful that we offer support because my mic is on, sir. They're so concerned about this mic. Do you all hear me?
I can hear you just fine, Ms. Salisbury.
A bit louder. Anyway, so I was trying to get my thunder out there and he just wanted to take it from me, so that's okay. Okay, here's what I'm trying to say is that for the health of the body, this district body, it is good that we think of those parts that could be in need. And we may be neglectful and not notice it. So I want to commend you for, I assume that I'm giving you the credit. You came up with this idea. I know you did. So I just want to thank you for it, okay?
Like all things, it is a collective effort and I agree with you. I agree with you. Anything we can do to support our folks and retain, there's a lot of building staff behind me and I can promise you that they would also echo. We absolutely could not do what we do if it weren't for, you know, all the folks that are supporting us along the way, this group being one of them.
Mr. President, so I know one of the points you talked about the need for support and then there is the compensation factor. And I know with the five hundred dollar stipend that's going to help the people that are the mentors. So is it going to be something maybe looked at revisited again for an overall compensation? So like in a creative way to kind of boost what they're being paid?
So the answer to that is absolutely. I think every year in conjunction with Ray Team, Dr. Martin Knox, Dr., you know, Mr. Gibson. I think we always have to evaluate where we are with regard to compensation and how that ranks with our competitors and those are our surrounding schools. And so first Ray Team meeting of the year will be this Thursday in this room from eight, eight thirty to three thirty. If you don't have anything want to do and you want to come in and talk with Ray Team, that is certainly something that we'll continue to evaluate. Eight thirty to three thirty. Yes.
I'll be coming in. I'll be coming in after you. What time you gonna be there? Natalie? No, get a vote. Okay, yeah. All right, new business approval, approval of board policies. Mr. Bobby.
I moved at the Board of Education of Social Policy, BDF voting method, BDDL, release of information, DB annual budget, DBB, physical year, DJF purchasing, DJFA federal programs and projects. GBLB references IPC, non-traditional instructions options, and JFGA interview with removal of students.
Motion made and seconded. Motion passes. New business, we have the first read of following. New business, we have the first read of following. Policies. For information. There any discussion on these? All right. Next we have the approval of the consent agenda.
I move that the board approve the September 11th, 2023 consent agenda as presented.
Motion made and seconded. Dr. Martin Knox has a reading of the donations that were given this month. The items on the consent agenda? Yeah, I just don't think they're not here. I thought you were picking up her glass.
Yeah, I thought she was there. I thought she was going to make sure he could see what I was saying.
So at this time, I'd like to read off the list of donations to the Raytown Quality School District, but I would also like to publicly say thank you to our partners, to the businesses in our community and to our. Parents for their meaningful contributions. A donation of a chair, island, small table lamps worth one thousand three hundred and fifty dollars from Jason and Jules Sneddon at Skyline Church to Robinson Elementary School. A donation of backpacks and school supplies worth five hundred dollars from Samuel U. Rogers Health Center Incorporated to West Ridge Elementary School. A donation of five hundred dollars from Dorothy Nixon to the Raytown Schools Wellness Center. A donation of coffee worth one hundred and twenty dollars from Starbucks to the Raytown School District for new teacher orientation. A donation of five hundred and eighty-seven backpacks and school supplies for incoming kindergarten students worth eighteen thousand five hundred and eighty-three dollars and twenty cents. From Grace Way Church to Raytown School District. I'd also like to take the opportunity to say thank you to Grace Way for always opening their doors and allowing us the use of their space, which is also a donation. So thank you to Grace Way. A donation of school supplies totaling three hundred and fifty dollars from Ivanhoe United Church to Robinson Elementary School. And finally, a donation of twenty-five dollar gift cards totaling five hundred dollars for food for meetings from Applebee's to Raytown Quality School District. This would conclude the donations list, Mr. Chair. Meeting back over to you.
Adjourn the regular board of education meeting at seven forty-one P M.
Second thirty motions. Motion pass.